Just so everybody's aware, every motion that's made tonight will be joint motions between the Board of Selectmen and the Soil Board. Is that correct, Town Council?
That's correct.
Thank you. Being Tuesday, March 7, 2023, I deem at 5:00 PM is there a motion to call the meeting to order for the Acushnet Board of Selectmen and the Soil Board?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The only order of business we have is new business PJ Keating Soil Removal Permit Application. The Board of Selectmen will review the application for a soil removal permit filed by PJ Keating for the property located at 72 South Main Street in hold a public hearing on said application. It advertised February 19, 2023. Review of matters presented, votes may be taken. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's a joint motion, Mr.?
That is a joint motion. All motions made tonight will be a joint motion between the Board of Selectmen and the Soil Board. And tonight, I would ask PJ Keating, give PJ Keating the opportunity and the respect to speak and present their application to the Board of Selectmen and most importantly, to the public. Whoever wants to get up and speak first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Luke Legere. I'm an attorney for PJ Keating Company. I'm a firm of McGregor, Legere, and Stevens. As you have indicated, Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight for the Board to consider the application filed by PJ Keating for a permit under the town's earth removal bylaw. It's been almost a year since PJ Keating was directed to file the application. It was a really massive undertaking, as I think is reflected in the application itself, which is fairly voluminous. It took a lot of hard work and effort over the course of many months to get that application completed. We filed it with the Board back in November. So here we are tonight to open the public hearing. We very much look forward to addressing all questions and issues that the Board may have after having had an opportunity, hopefully, to review the application. With me here tonight are a number of folks from PJ Keating Company. I won't introduce them all. Derek Hill, President of PJ Keating Company right here, Doug Vigno, Environmental Compliance Officer for PJ Keating, and Rob Robinson, Vice President of Aggregates, in addition to many others. But I suspect that between the four of us, we will probably be addressing most of the questions you may have this evening. So without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Hill for some brief opening comments.
Good afternoon or good evening, depending on what you're looking at. But my name is Derek Hill, and I'm the President of PJ Keating. Appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the Board this evening relative to our application. You know, rocks build America. Imagine a road with no asphalt or ready-mixed concrete. Imagine a house, a school, a store with no ready-mixed concrete. Imagine New Bedford Harbor with no armor stone for the walls. You know, rocks build America. The PJ Keating facility at 73 South Main Street is an aggregate producer. The economic multiplier effect of the aggregated industry business, for every $1 of aggregate sales, it produces another $3.47 benefit in other industries. For every dollar of wages, it creates another $4.19 of revenue in other industries. This comes from the Phoenix Group, Phoenix-Center Org. That's a study done in Big Tank. So anyways, just thought that was of value to the community. One other thing would really be, you know, what is the cost of the Acushnet facility for being shuttered? You know, how is that impacting the South Coast economy? How is it impacting the Town of Acushnet, EPW revenues, so forth? So those are certain things we certainly want to bring out as everyone considers the reinstatement of the quarry. So with that, just PJ Keating seeking a reinstatement of our operating permit to mine and process aggregate for the South Coast economy. The application is comprehensive, and in our opinion is complete, based on the Soil Conservation Bylaw, Article 6. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it back to the Select Board. Perhaps there are questions that you may have for us relative to the application. I don't know that it'd be beneficial to go through the application in all of its detail, but we certainly know that you've taken some time to look at that. And perhaps at this point, we could listen to some of the questions you might have and respond accordingly, or ask for them in writing, and then we'll get back to you on that.
You don't feel comfortable going over your concerns with what the application presents?
Do you have any, sorry, if I may, there was certainly a letter submitted back in the fall where we had posed several questions to the Board, really mostly sort of administrative, procedural in nature. I think those were mostly reiterated in our cover letter. So we're certainly happy to discuss those with the Board. If you want, we can kind of walk through them. It's really whatever you prefer.
I think for the public, they don't know what's inside the application, right? And that's why, hence, this is a public meeting. So I think it'd be smart on your behalf to go through the application and just some of the bullet points that we asked for off while the application and express your views on that.
So one thing I will just say, Mr. Chair, we had the impression that tonight's meeting was going to be primary or hearing, I should say, was primarily going to be administrative in nature. So TRC, who's the consultant firm that put together the application itself, is not here this evening. They certainly will be at future hearings. That's fully our expectation. Really, those folks would be probably best suited to address a lot of the sort of specific technical aspects of the application itself. So certainly, we could kind of walk through it a bit if you want, but I guess it was our expectation that tonight we'd be dealing things with, you know, dealing with things like the Board, considering whether you wanted to retain a peer review consultant and discussing that. So not trying at all to be evasive, but, you know, I think really TRC would be the folks best qualified to speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I did have a conversation-
Sure. Town Council, Jeff Blake.
I'm Town Council, Jeffrey Blake. And I did have a conversation with Council this morning that I talked with you about. I don't think that the Chair and the Board is asking you to go through each and every point and the technical aspects of it, but I do think that they're asking you to give a broad brush of what this is. Got kind of a brief, you know, a broad overview of what you're asking the town to do.
Sure.
What's in there, the tonnage, truck traffic, you know, just some of these very, you know, basic, like I keep saying, broad overview. We're not asking you to get into the, you know, the soil calculator or the stormwater calculations at 258, you know, those kind of things, but rather, you live the application. They've reviewed it. They've seen it. It hasn't been, it will be posted on the website, I guess, after this meeting. So most of the people in this room have no idea what you're asking. That's all.
And is that, Mr. Chairman, a fair summary of what-
That would be close.
Okay. That's really helpful. Thank you, Mr. Blake. Thank you, Mr. Blake.
So, you know, just on a high level, I mean, I think for the majority of the residents in Acushnet, you know, the Blue Stone Quarry dates back to the 1880s, and there's been an asphalt plant on the property since the 1950s. Peak volumes in the quarry itself have exceeded a million tons in a calendar year, and we're currently permitted, proven reserves are in excess of 50 million tons. So we are in the business of processing aggregates, right? So that is extracting hard rock from the ground and reducing it down to different dimensional sizes, whether we're making it for the New Bedford Harbor in seawall and armor stone. Those rocks can be anywhere from dimension stone of two to four feet or something like that, all the way down to a washed manufactured sand. And then the majority of the products we make are dimension stones, anywhere from, say, six to 12-inch erosion stone, two to four-inch erosion stone. Those are used in drainage swales and any steep slopes to prevent erosion, right? Which erosion is bad because that creates turbidity and soil runoff. So the majority of our products are building products. So the sized aggregate of, say, inch and a half down to a 3/8 stone are used in the manufacturing of hot mixed asphalt. So how we all got here tonight was on a road, right? Those same products, the three-quarter, the half-inch, the 3/8 stone, those products are put into ready-mixed concrete, right? And those are the foundations and the floors that we have in our homes and our buildings, our schools, and everywhere else. So those are the products that we are end product. Actually, when you think about our business, the construction industry, when we think about recycling, we are the circular economy. So, and what I mean by circular economy is we, from a sustainability standpoint, our aggregates, we produce a three-quarter stone or an inch and a half stone or a 3/8 stone. It goes into concrete. It goes into roads. When those roads have, or concrete have served their best of life, we can recycle those products and bring them back into our, you know, into our stream as a percentage. So when we pick up a failed roadway, that material goes back into the asphalt plant. So our aggregates constantly relive in a circular world. When you think about a bottle of water, right, the packaging and the sustainability, the water is renewable, but the plastic itself is not, right? So as we think about a circular economy, packaging for industry is going to be a big piece of what we do. So in our business, that is what we do, is we are a circular economy. We are sustainable products. And we're constantly looking at ways on how we can improve and reduce our carbon footprint. So, you know, and that's a big tall order for all of us, right? So how will we do that in the future? We'll certainly be doing that by reducing the amount of carbon, combustible engines, and moving towards other alternatives. But in the process of extracting aggregates from the ground, we drill and blast, right? So we're drilling and blasting in a certain pattern. So we drill and blast the hard stone, which is different than a sand and gravel operation. A sand and gravel operation does not require a use of drilling and blasting. But really, the sand and gravel reserves in the South Coast are nearly depleted. We're currently trucking aggregates from Cranston, Rhode Island, to service the Cape. So, you know, that's the impact of Acushnet not running right now, is the businesses in this area are paying for all of that transportation, thus increased carbon footprint because we're hauling from Cranston, Rhode Island, or Rentham, Massachusetts, or farther away because just the source of aggregates to keep our economy going are farther and farther away. So we do that, and our process, so in our process of drilling and blasting, we use heavy equipment to bring the blasted product up out of the hole, and then we put it through our gyro and our crusher, which there's a series of conveyors, a series of crushers that are reducing and sorting. So if you think about that, you're screening material off and you're sorting it, right?
Jeez, already.
So that's really the end of what we're doing here. And to that end, you know, if we're in our historical volumes, like I said, we're about 1.2 million in aggregates produced and sold through the facility on an annual basis. You mentioned truck traffic. We submitted in the application an approximation based on that peak volume of 985 truck trips.
Wow.
So that itself is the peak, and that was, you know, that was what we came up with in approximation for aggregate sales, the ready-mix sales, and the hot mixed asphalt sales on the property.
And can everybody just hear me when I speak instead of me going to this microphone? I just, again, I can't emphasize, just, I would ask everybody, so we can get this moving along, is to be respectful for the applicant, for the Soil Board, and most importantly, each other that are in the room. We'll get through this. Everybody's going to have a time to talk. PJ Keating's presenting their application to the Soil Board, discussing their application, however you want to view this, with the Board, with the public. The Board's gonna then have a response or questions, concerns with PJ Keating's application. And then once we're done vetting that process, I will turn it over to the public for their public comment if we get to that tonight. So everybody just be patient. I know there's a lot of anxiety in this room. I also have anxiety from prepping for all of this stuff and dealing with this for the last two and a half years with PJ Keating. I think it's, you know, it's, we're trying to work to a common goal to coexist together, right? I think that's what's happened. We've had a separation of the corporation from the public coexisting, the Town of Acushnet coexisting. And we've coexisted for a long, long time. And it's my job, hopefully, it's my job and my two members of my Board's job, to figure that out on how we coexist and move forward in the Town of Acushnet. So thank you for being patient. We'll do what we need to do tonight. I hope to get everything vetted out, but if we don't, we'll have to have a continuance, but hopefully we will. Mr. Hill, I apologize. I turn it back to you.
No problem. In the permit, we talked about removal. So we talked about the removal of the hard rock and the processing of the material. The hours of operation we submitted was from 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM, and that is based on our historical operating there. The hours up to 9:00 PM were focused in around the maintenance, the R&amp;M of the plant. So we had a second shift that would come in and work on the plant. The average, we're thinking that on average, based on our information from the historical point of view, you're looking at about 260 operating days a year, somewhere in that vicinity, for production, right? The sale of aggregates outside of holidays or Sundays, Saturdays, has been, you know, a year-round operation. We have shut down for, say, the holidays, Christmas, and so forth, a week off there. But for the most part, the selling, there's really two components to the operation, right? There's the production side of the operation, where we're making the product, and then there's the sales component side. So operating hours of sales, you know, have differed in the past. And so when we submitted the application, we kind of, we used the historical information we had. In the application itself, there is approximately, you know, as I mentioned, about 50 million tons of proven reserves left. In excess of that, I think actually the report will say plus or minus 57 million. But, you know, to that end, we're saying somewhere around that number, you know, and that would, and thus the 50 years. The property itself is approximately 381 acres. Also included on the property are some business administration buildings, equipment area, a ready-mixed concrete plant that is leased to Boston Sand and Gravel and LNS, and then a hot mixed asphalt plant. There's a large buffer area in the back of undeveloped property, and that property, and there's a large easement of power lines. And our property, I think actually there's an abutment with the Town of Acushnet. The application itself, we go into the quarry. We talked about that. We talked about the size of the property. We talk in the application, I think this is the kind of the question I'll come back to, or I'll actually just ask it now, and that is, in the application, there is the provision that the town would seek and hire at the expense of the applicant, a engineering firm, a peer review firm. And that's consistent in the state, in all the states that I've worked in over the years in this industry, very consistent that a town, given the technical nature of things in here around hydrology and turbidity and sampling of water, all of those things, to have a peer review. Because none, you know, myself nor the Board, that's not what we do every day. So, you know, that's probably something that we certainly want to get going because it's probably a bit of a lengthy process, and certainly you'd need to bring somebody up to speed on that application. So we strongly encourage that we open that dialogue around a peer review and an engineering firm. So in the document itself, we specifically talk about the geology of the property. We talk about the hydrology of the property. We talk about the vegetation and wildlife. Again, that might be something else that's done, right? You know, somebody might ask us to, the peer review may come up and say, hey, has anybody looked at any endangered species? And we address that from our side, from our consultant, TRC. But again, there's, you know, we certainly want to be respective of the vegetation and the wildlife, and there is a large wetland out on the back part of the property, right, that's contiguous with other properties outside of the Keating. So we've got the jurisdiction of the water. We talk about wildlife and the different soils there. Our primary interest is in the hard rock, the blue stone. The mining operations, we talk about that, and we have drawings in there, which, you know, we won't go into, but it will be posted, and we certainly, in the future, could bring in blown-up drawings to that extent of what we're looking at. The difference, you know, back to sand and gravel operations versus hardstone operations is, you know, a sand and gravel operation can have a bank that is folded down over by a bulldozer, right? So if you have a vertical face, the sand and gravel, you could take a bulldozer up and fold that down relatively easy. A hardstone quarry, you cannot go ahead and just fold that over. So the bylaw specifically references that, which is a variance that we would need for our operation. So that would be an example of several of the variances that we've laid out in the application, that being one of them, is that we certainly cannot meet that requirement in your bylaw. But all of the quarries in the state of Massachusetts are in the same situation as us relative to a vertical face, right? Stormwater runoff, our site is actually regulated under the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination, so NIPIDAS permit, and the sampling, it has been ongoing. And I think this past summer, the town decided not to continue sampling anymore because they, you know, we were below, significantly below all thresholds. So, but again, it is a requirement. We do sample. We do that, and we certainly, and we retain a contractor for that. So we'll be, you know, as we kind of go back, you know, and review that in the permit, those will be kind of conversations between the peer review engineering firm and our firm relative to sampling protocols, storm events, and all of that. So we talked about the stormwater management, erosion runoff, particulate matter. Sources of particulate matter on the property would be from the processing of aggregates. It is also going to be from the truck traffic or vehicle traffic on the property. And primarily, you know, those would be our big points, right? The point source from, say, the asphalt plant, ready-mix plant, but it's really the roadways and that. We've invested over $3 million in the past couple of years on the property, from things like the truck wheel wash to noise and dust suppression around the plant itself. We have particulate meters on the property, so we've done that. We don't know how all of that works because we haven't run the plant since. So those would be some of the things that we have there. Know that we really, I mean, we spend a fair amount of time going into that. There is, when it comes to the end state of the quarry out there, it's hard to imagine, you know, what the highest and best use of the property is 50 years from today, right? We don't know that. But what we do know is not only does the Keating Company, our parent company, CRH America Materials, we have proven public-private partnerships around the end state of our quarries, whether we turn them over, we've created golf courses. The example, there's an example in the application, which is not our quarry, but it was an application of an industrial park. They actually used the hole itself and created geothermal, used it for geothermal heating and cooling of their building. So there's a lot of different end source, end use for the property. We would think that in a working relationship, we try to come up with agreeing to what that is. But I don't know that anybody in the room today can say that the highest and best use 50 years from now is X. So we do kind of leave that a little bit open, but we certainly know that it would be important to back up a reclamation plan and end use with some sort of financial bond and commitment to the town, right? So you would know that, you know, when our operation is done, it's mutually beneficial, and we're doing that together, right? But what does that look like? Maybe somebody knows what 50 years from now is going to bring us, but I'm not sure. We do talk about the reclamation plan itself, and we certainly can address any of the safety-related concerns that might come from the hole, you know, letting the hole fill back in as a pond. You know, someone might say, hey, it's a great place to set up a slalom course and put a jet boat on there, right? But, you know, that may not be the highest and best use for the town. There may be, in some of our examples, I cited a golf course. But in other areas, we've cited walking trails, community gardens, you know, subdivisions going back through for housing developments, that sort of stuff. So there's, I think there's probably a combination of things that we could do with the property, and we would certainly be looking at that. But in the end, it is our property, and we'd like to make sure that, working with the town, that we get the highest and best use out of that property in its end life. I think at this point, I've kind of explained what we're trying to do here, where we are, and I guess what we could do at this point. We did touch on the peer review, which I think was an important question that we needed to ask. And maybe at this point, we come back and perhaps field a few questions from the panel.
Selectmen, would you like to say something?
First of all, Mr. Hill, I want to thank you for being here. It's the second time that we've got a chance to interact. And, you know, the previous administration at the quarry, I think, took a different approach. And quite frankly, I'm caught up in that crossfire, right? It was litigation, litigation, litigation. For those of you who don't know, I'm personally been named in a civil lawsuit. So that has kind of restricted my ability to engage, but I'm taking a leap of faith based on our initial meeting and the tone of this meeting. And I take you at your word that you have a vested interest in the success of this community and the Town of Acushnet, just as much as you do have a vested interest in the success of the quarry. And so for that, thank you. You know, from, at least just from my perspective, you know, those who've changed the bylaw, I think it was really helpful to give us some more guardrails and protections in place as a municipality. You know, I think we've been in desperate need of a reset, not only from a relationship standpoint, but how the town views the facility. Yeah, it's been there since 1880, and it's been operational since 1950, but the footprint and the amount of activity there clearly is not 1880, right, volume, right? So I think we gotta be, let's be realistic about what we're dealing with now. The 1950s were a long time ago, 1980s, 1990s, early 2000s. What's there now is much different than what we all have been dealing with. And so the Board, you know, like we were advocates of, we had a Soil Board made up of a number of officials in town at the time. It made it sound like a good idea, outlived its usefulness. You know, I've been an advocate, like, if we're going to take the heat for this, we might as well be on the Soil Board that makes those decisions, right? So I feel much better about where we are and the infrastructure that we have in place to try to handle this. And so to me, I look at, you know, impact on the community. I think historically, we've left a lot of money on the table. I don't know that our fees have kept up with inflation and how we look at what goes on over there. I look at what took place in New Bedford most recently with Parallel Products, which is different business, but the community, the city of New Bedford and the proponent there, they came up with a host community agreement. It was something that they negotiated together, that reinvests in the affected area. And that's something that's important to me, and I know to my colleagues. So as we look at this application, I think it's the, we want to make sure that- So as we look at this application, I think it's the, we want to make sure that the technical aspect is squared away and the peer review and all of that stuff. I think that'll be, that'll be handled by people much more in the know than me. But from a big picture standpoint, I'm looking at quality of life, what we can do to reinvest in this portion of town to make life better for those who are living here. So I just wanted to put that out there and, you know, I was upfront about that the last time we met, but in this forum, that's how I am looking at it. I'm not going to look at every dot and every T. We're going to hire people to do that, but I'm going to fight tooth and nail to ensure that there's quality of life issues, but also I'll fight for you as well to ensure that you've got an opportunity to operate your facility. Appreciate that. Best I can do for everybody here.
Other questions?
I have, I have, obviously I've done my job and I've tried to go through the application on behalf of the town and the residents of the community. That's, that's our job, right? Is to look at the application and scrutinize as much as we can to get a better product for the end game, right? I think before I start going through, because a lot of it is peer review, Mr. Hill, you know, I think I've said this to a number of associates of yours on pre-inspections from a few years back. Part of the big problem is, is the capacity that you're running at, right? You're just producing so much dust into the neighborhoods and that's really the troubling part that really brought us here is the dust in the neighborhoods, right? Nobody deserves to live that way. So I'll go through some of my notes throughout your application and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hinckley, but I just, I made myself some, some notes. Page 14, surface, surface water drainage, 3.5.3 groundwater. It's all peer review. Pretty much pages eight through 15, I would be looking for peer review. It's not stuff that I have to get into detail on. People will see it in the application when it's posted online. Page 20, 4.1, you talk about hours per day, days per week. I think that's something that you've already disclosed to the public here tonight. I think that's probably one of the biggest conversation pieces that we'll have when we set the permit, special conditions on the permit. Because clearly, when you were running before, you were, I thought you were running 24/7 and I'm pretty sure that's pretty much what you were doing before and it's obviously too much for the neighborhoods, too much stress on the town. So there's areas of concerns with the hours of operation. Page 20, 4.2. Just want to flip to my pages to make sure.
And Mr. Gaspar, I just could comment on that too. The 24/7 comment is accurate and that probably really retained, pertained to the asphalt plant as well. So, so you know, there's, because, but we're here tonight to talk about the aggregate facility, the production and the sales of profit. But you're right that you could go back in and our asphalt plant was permitted on a 24/7 basis for the DOT jobs.
Okay. I'm just bringing points off because the bylaw says we have the right to regulate hours of operation, right?
Yeah.
So it's all about proving to the community that you can handle that, right? And then we grow as we prove that we're disciplined and you're doing the right thing for the residents of the community in my eyes. So 4.2, you're saying about 50 years of the current rate of extraction. We go back to that same thing that I just talked about, 1.2 million tons a year. The present soil board permit has been 800,000 cubic yards. I get it. I've done a little bit of the density factors, figuring out how you got 800,000 cubic yards, if that's a ton. And it depends on the density of the material. It's not so much a ton, right? It could be up to 1.3 depending on the density of the material. Maybe it goes higher than that. I kind of stopped at that because that's really what my research showed me was 1.3 was probably the factor to go. So that comes out to 1,400,000 tons. Again, probably too much for what we're doing in a residential zone. That's my comment on that. Peer review, I guess would be at that. On page 20, 4.3, you say, they say, I wrote, they say, 248 acres of the 382 acres have been disturbed. So we asked for a bond, right? And then you gave 10,000, it's called out $10,000 per acre on the bond and you say there's 100 acres that's open? I view that as saying, that's disturbed acres, your words, not mine. So I would say that that bond should be calculated on disturbed acres, not the open face of the quarry. And we'll leave that up for, for the board to decide. It's just my thoughts on what you say. And it's right inside your application that you say you've disturbed 248 acres in the application. That's, that's how I come up with that and not the, not the million. You also, in your application, you make a claim in phase two that you're going 400, to negative 467 feet. I asked the question, is that realistic? That I don't know. So that's something I think that's up for discussion as well, is trying to go negative 467. I think right now you're negative 253.
Correct.
Okay. So that's just a comment. Page 21 through 27, I documented just basically all diagrams. I will speak on diagrams because our bylaw does call out topographical plans. I don't consider this a topographical plan. So some of your pictures are taken from the moon and I don't really think that gives us contours and features, existing conditions and things of the like. So I would ask that if you do have those plans, current existing condition plans, please submit those for review. That would also be peer reviewed as well. Page 28, jump to page 28, 4.3.2 excavation and blasting, the first sentence. I asked myself a basic question. It says, operations at the site will use conventional mining practices common in the industry. My question is, can you use conventional mining practice common in the industry considering this quarry is in the middle of residential homes? Page 28, second paragraph, you write, you, all blast will occur on a regular business days. Right now, you're only allowed to blast Tuesday through Thursday, but only two of those days, not every day. Can you, can you explain that a little bit further in detail?
I think what we're trying to do, I don't know, Rob, would you, would you like to cover that question or?
Rob Robinson, VP of Aggregates. I think in this application, we put that in for the full, the full week. Yes, there are certain things in there that we used to do differently regarding the blasting. You're quite right, Mr. Gaspar, on the three days, but we would only shoot two days. So, but we put in for the full because obviously we go from there. And it was very flexible as well. We would, it was due to the weather conditions and wind can, you know, there's wind constraints and there's rain as well. And we're trying to avoid shooting on days of heavy cloud cover, as you know.
I think that that's why we were looking for the flexibility on that. It might be that the frequency of the blast, one or two times a week would be right, but we want the flexibility that if we have low ground, we have low cloud cover, we know that that has an impact on the air velocity, which, which can affect the butters. So that's where we are looking at that. But certainly, peer review conversation to that end would be, would it be appropriate?
Okay.
So the other thing would be a thunderstorm, you know, so weather, back to weather, right? If we have a thunderstorm moving in, but we're loading the holes, we're going to sit on, we're going to sit on the shot for that, for that night. We notify the police and fire department and we'd sit on it and wait and then shoot it the next day. So if we were rigid and we only were allowed to blast, say Tuesdays and Fridays, and we were doing that on Tuesday and, you know, pop-up thunderstorms came through and we had to, we had to close the facility down for that, then, then our permit would be so rigid that we'd have to sit on it for X number of days. So that would be kind of the context behind that language.
I'm just looking at it from a resident's standpoint where now we are going to, they got to be concerned where the blast can occur any day of the week. And that's a little bit annoying, I would have to imagine, especially if you're nearby because I live a couple of miles away from the quarry on the other side of Middle Road and I can hear the blast sometimes at my house depending on did they, in the blast. So just a concern that I, I'm sure that the residents would want to know that there's going to be blasting occurring five days a week instead of two days a week or some deviation of two days a week, but who knows what day it's going to be without any kind of fear warning that that shot's going to go off. And God knows what some of these folks may have going on in the house. We don't know that. You don't know that, just like we can't predict what the, the reclamation plan should be 50 years from now, right?
And I think that that's where, you know, it's important that we have a solid communication plan that, you know, we do robo-calling in the, in the communities that we're doing blasting now. And again, going back to your comment, you know, perhaps the language would be better suited and we get to that in a conversation around frequency of blast per week. And then that, you know, we're then, we're setting that expectation out there in the community that, you know, we are going to blast on Tuesdays or Thursdays, for example. And, you know, those are the two days that we would blast in the event of a weather event or some, you know, some situation on the site that precludes the ability to blast. We would have to go back out with a robo-call, discuss with town officials, police, fire, that, you know, this is our situation and this is the change.
I get the reason for the flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, I've been working on this issue for a few years now, right? And I'm familiar with Mr. Rob Robinson. I've worked with him at, at the quarry, discussing all these issues. And I get it, sometimes weather's not permitting, right? And you want to get your two shots in so you can produce the amount of rock that you need to produce. I get it from a business standpoint. I just don't know if we want to have that deviation away from that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because I actually have a copy of your blasting permit inside my book as well. And it says Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays only, and only two of those days are permitted out of those three days. So that one extra day was given for that flexibility of weather conditions. So I don't know how the general public's going to feel about saying, hey, I'm going to, you know, Monday morning at 11 o'clock, we're blasting. I don't know that until we get some public comments and see how they feel about it. I have to, I have to mention what's inside of it now.
We could certainly share what we're doing in the other communities in Massachusetts.
So your, your, page 30, second land use plan, 5.2, is a definition of open pits. And I'm going to assume that this is why you're saying that you can't backfill the first 300 feet in the bylaw. It says, open active pits as compared with surface coal mines provide little opportunity, if any, for simitatus mining and reclamation because the pit continues to expand and deepen as long as the mine is producing. Also, the ultimate depth and shape of the pit, although roughly predictable, are dictated by the economics of mining and the geometry of one of the ore deposit rather than the particular reclamation goals. Is that one of the reasons why you say you can't comply with that bylaw, that statute that's been in the bylaw? And I understand that statute's been there since 1989, since it was originally adopted, but we've never held you accountable for that statute of the bylaw, right? So the bylaw says, if somebody's going to come in, I know you were an existing quarry, but I really don't know and I would ask you to give me that information too. Where were you at in 1989 when this soil conservation bylaw was adopted? I think that would be beneficial for this board to be reviewing that to see, you know, what the depth was, what the size of it was, so that we can make better decisions on moving forward with the permit, right? I think when we look at that and so we're saying to you, basically it's been there since 1989, but I, I'm going to assume that basically we're saying to you, because it's in the bylaw, you need to stop filling in your quarry. And I get it, it's not practical, right? You, you gave the definition of the open pit and I'm assuming, is that why you gave that definition?
I would like to go back and research, you know, provide you with a written response to that, only because I think it, it's a fairly complex question and I want to make sure from a historical standpoint that I articulate correctly the answer and I'm not comfortable doing that today.
That's fine. If you, if you could, as part of the research that I couldn't find, can, can you go back to somehow in your records to 1989 when the original bylaw, soil conservation bylaw? Can you tell me the depth of that quarry at that particular time and the open face of that particular quarry at that open time?
We will do the research.
I think it's going to help in some decision making and that's only my own personal opinion, but I am kind of wrapped around this thing and I am most familiar with what's going on over there. So I think that we need to look at all of these things and try to derive, you know, some of our, our answers in, in the permit around the scope of that. So I'd appreciate that. Page 33, I just wrote peer review. 6.1, second paragraph, I wrote, not true. So it says on the reclamation, 6.1, second paragraph, drainage, stormwater and erosion control. Town bylaw, Article 9, refers to the stormwater management practices to protect surface water quality. The site is a pre-existing operation and does not discharge to the town's stormwater collection system. Then I'll bring your attention down what I labeled as A, B, C, D and E. So number five or E in mind, provide protection from property damage by the stormwater underneath that same category. It says, PJ Keating assists the surrounding neighborhood to the southwest by intercepting off-site stormwater runoff and allowing the surface water to migrate through a culvert across the site for eventual discharge to the Akushnet River. In the absence of PJ Keating's discharge culvert, the neighborhood would be impacted by flooding. So it says that, up top, it says that you are not part, does not discharge to the town's stormwater collection system, but clearly it does.
Good, good question. I think that, Doug, we want to speak to this because there was an incident in the fall, I'm going to say late summer, where we had, there was a big thunderstorm event. I think actually the town's Department of Public Works was working in that neighborhood doing some grading and paving and several of the residents were flooded out. So there's a low area in that, in that area and there is a culvert because the DPW came to the property and inspected the pipe to make sure that the culvert, that bisects our property ultimately to discharge into the Akushnet River was not plugged up by, say, beavers or sticks or kids building a fort or whatever. It was determined that that was not the problem of the flooding in that neighborhood. But that stormwater is not stormwater generated on the Keating property and then migrating over into residence area or green area or whatever. That, that was water generated in the neighborhood and then that, that, for whatever reason, the work that was there, I don't know all the details of it, that, that significant rain event created flooding in that neighborhood. But the pipe that goes through our property, I happened to be on the property that day, does egress out, but, you know, so I think.
So my question to you is, that pipe, I'm very familiar with that pipe. It's, it's on, on that corner over there. Pretty much we're a rapilest, right? And it shoots across your property diagonally. It comes out from underneath of your main house, your office, and it goes into your basin. And then your discharge comes from the lower quarry and you're, from your basins jumps up into 1A, I think you call it, or 1C, the basin up top, which is your discharge where you do your testing. And then that discharges into that secondary basin where our pipe comes into that secondary basin and discharges. So that's all part of our stormwater systems. But you claim that you don't discharge into our stormwater system. So all I'm asking you is, the question is, do you or don't you? Because it, it seems to me like you do discharge into the town's stormwater system.
If I may? And we could, and I think just to preface that, we'll look at that with a peer review and then come back with a diagram and, and articulate on that, but I'll let Doug speak to that.
Yeah, so in that particular case, the NPDES permit EPA came out. They noticed that there was a 30-inch drain line that was coming off the property. And so therefore they made us do our sampling upstream of that 30-inch confluence because it wouldn't give us a true reading of the water that's coming off of our property if it was co-mingled with that water coming off in the neighborhood. So we discharge up gradient or sample up gradient of where that 30-inch line comes through. So our, our water quality is based on strictly the water that comes out of our basins. We capture it there. They don't want us to capture it below where the water comes offsite because that has literally higher total suspended solids in it than what our own water has.
I get it, I get it from your testing perspective, that you're testing from basin 1C or 1A, whatever we call it now, the one that you just rehabbed at the top. I'm just, I'm just making a claim that where you say you don't discharge into our stormwater system and then down below, it's clearly saying you're, you're discharging into that stormwater system. Because all that water is going to go into the secondary basin where ours is coming in and feeding into that secondary basin and we even have stormwater discharge. Just a point I'm making. So peer review can determine whether that's not factual.
Yep.
I can't see. I, I can't see how it's not, because all water's coming from the quarry of migrating into that system.
So, so the same thing, Mr. Chairman. The water that runs off of South Main Street also enters that man-made channel that eventually discharges into the Acushnet River. And, not to speak for the Conservation Commission, but at one point, Mr. Roca acknowledged the fact that our responsibility is to add clean water to the system. Now, if there's a, if there's a system that comes offsite from the town's own contribution, that's from the 30-inch line and the direct runoff from South Main Street that dumps in right at the bridge area, then we're, we're contributing fresh water or cleaner water because we test it, then what you would be getting off of the stormwater runoff off of South Main Street and from the neighborhood. So, in the past, that water was sampled downstream of those two confluences. And EPA said, wait a second, you're, you're now sampling water that isn't generated from your property. You're sampling water that is commingled with water that comes off of your property and also off of town property. So they said, that's not basically fair to PJ Keating, to be sampling and reporting on water that isn't attributable to PJ Keating. So that's where they made the difference. And so, I, I get your point. Whether or not that water that comes off of our site eventually goes into that channel, that unknown channel that goes down to the Acushnet River, if you separated out the, the quality of our water compared to the quality of water that comes off of the upgradient neighborhood, as well as what comes off South Main Street, our water is historically much cleaner than, than the water that comes off of town property.
But to your point, we certainly should, with the peer review, identify through a diagram, the water flows, and, and then put that back in, so that's due notice.
If I may, Derek.
Yep.
That's all explained in our SWIP, so, in our Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan that the town has. So it does show how we segregate those two locations.
Pages 34 and 35, you talk, and it talks a lot about the site is not new development in a number of places, and, and that's pretty much all of the standards. So my question is, is making the whole bigger considered new development slash expansion? Because you talked expansion pretty extensively throughout this application. So, expansion, is that considered development, in your opinion?
I think that we'll leave that to the peer review. We do not see it as new development. It's part of what we, what we do and what we've, what we've been permitted in the past to do, so.
I'm just mentioning that so the folks in the room know that if so, then some of the standards do apply, because you say on a lot of your standards, does not apply. So I guess that's all up into the interpretation of new development and expansion, how that's viewed, right?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, Mr. Chairman. And I think to Mr. Hill's point, it's really something that's a pretty technical question that's best dealt with by engineers. TRC put together the, the section that you're talking about now, dealing with masti, these stormwater standards. I believe that's what you were referring to there. So absolutely, that's exactly the kind of issue that we would expect TRC would be going back and forth with the boards consulting on to get to the bottom.
It's after a lot of you talk about masti permits, so that's fine. Page 36 and 37, I have peer review. Page 38, 6.1.3, dust control. So you talk a lot about dust control, you talk about dust control plans, sources of particulate matter, and then actions taken by PJ Keating to address dust. When I look through all these actions, what I see is same old, same old. This is pretty much what you've tried to do in the past and hasn't worked. So I don't know how we get past that, right? So the reason, I keep emphasizing, the reason why we're here, the majority of the reason why we're here, is all about dust in the neighborhoods, right? Impacting other people's lives, the health and safety of, of their families and their children. I mean, I wrote right here, you're basically back to self-governing yourself. It didn't work in the past, I wrote. You haven't received a complaint since operations have ceased, and I got not adequate, quite honestly. You talk about South Main Street shall be cleaned with a vacuum truck at a minimum once per day, Monday through Friday. I kind of say you need a sweeper on-site for when a complaint comes through. If that's for the cause of dust, you gotta get the sweeper out in whatever neighborhood it may be. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things I could sit here and, and discuss with you about your dust control policy, but it's not working. Pretty much, it's the Board of Health's jurisdiction at that point, right? On, on that, on that dust control, it's part of our zoning bylaw, Section 3.3.5, dust mitigation plan approved by the Board of Health. So it's not like you can just sit back and say, this is what we're doing to prevent dust. You have an adopted plan by the Board of Health. Is that correct, Mr. Korea?
Yep, we haven't seen any new ones after the asphalt plant was moved, but we do have one that's approved right now, prior to.
So I think it's, you know, it's, it's important that you, as the new president of this corporation, you know, you, you take a different approach to what was done in the past, right? If, if that's what our goal is, to work together to get to a permit so that you can open back up and do operations, right? I think it's never gonna be successful if you don't take care of the dust, right? That's, that's a primary factor, is dust. And nobody deserves to live with those kind of conditions, quite honestly. I wouldn't have my kids in those yads playing around. I mean, I've seen gutters, I've seen swimicles, I've seen grills. I've done it all with a lot of these residents, not only on the south side, the north side, the west side. I've been there, I've seen it. It's not like, it's not like, hey, I've never been there, I haven't experienced this, I've experienced it. Mr. Robinson, I've had those, he's at the podium, getting ready to go to the podium, but I, I've worked with Mr. Robinson, and I commend Mr. Robinson in many factors of some of our earlier work. In fact, it was me mentioning to Mr. Robinson to put those covers back over the conveyors. That was part of the problem, they were there in the past, they're no longer there. That's, that's how the company's taking advantage of the town and its townspeople, and basically said, we don't give a damn, we're just gonna operate. And, and Rob's the one that came and worked with the previous president prior to you coming. And quite honestly, I mean, he's done more than what I thought. He put the, the covers over the conveyors, and, and now I see the whole frigging plant is covered in mirrors, basically, right? Sound barriers and, and dust control measures, so, you know, kudos to, to Mr. Robinson. But, you know, this is the, this is the biggest thing, I think, that aggravate the people, right? And, and this is how we guard here. So dust control is something that you have to emphasize, and, and just as a new president of this company, I'm asking you to do something different than what you've done in the past to help this community. Because it's never gonna work for you, Mr. Hill, if you don't address the dust. You're gonna be in this situation, whether it's us three or three different members on this board acting as a soil board, they're gonna come, every time you come for a permit, they're gonna nail you, right? They're all, you're gonna have cease and desist, you're gonna be shut down. And it's unfair to all those people that, if they're workers, those people that are in the back of the room, and I know some of those faces back there, okay? I've had conversations with them. It's unfair to them people and their families as workers of your corporation for them not to be at work in this local quarry and being shipped out to Boston or somewhere else to earn their living when this is where their job really is at. That's your job as president of the corporation. So I'm asking you, with emphasis, do something more than what you've done with dust, because it's never gonna work out. You will be shut back down all over again. And that's not the goal of this body, I don't believe for a minute. Based on what Mr. Lona said in his opening remarks, I don't believe that's what he wants. What I want to see, and what everybody in this room and everybody else, as our taxpayers, do want to see, is how we coexist, as I mentioned earlier. How do we make it a successful operating quarry, right? Maybe not going back to what you were, but make it successful, put people back to work, but also have a clean town. We deserve that. So, on that note, I'll leave that where it's at. That's for you to figure out with the Board of Health, because it's really under their jurisdiction. Page 39, I've said everything I need to say about it. The only thing, that, page 40, I'll jump to speed limit signs, you've got 15 miles an hour in the, in the, too fast, I wrote too fast, big source of dust, again, going back to the dust. I've been in that quarry while it was active, pitches of backs of trucks going through that backside of your quarry. You can't even see the back of the truck, and I was 25, 30 feet in back of that truck, and I couldn't see an 18-wheeler's tailgate. So a big source, and that road goes right up by that residential zone. You have 10 miles an hour up here by the scale house. My recommendation is you keep it 10 miles an hour everywhere in the quarry and see if that works out a little bit better for you. That's just the recommendation on my behalf, because I have lived this nightmare for a while.
If I could just respond to a few things, Doug.
Sure.
One of, one of the things, you know, obviously dust is, is, that'd be a number one priority for us as we manage that. So automated sprinkling systems, we've gone ahead and started to build out infrastructure in there. You know, the conventional method of using water trucks on a hot, humid day, it's very dry, water truck goes back to fill, the road dries out, you know, truck drives through it and we get dust. So we're, we are going to, we are investing, and we'll commit to investing, in additional automated sprinkling systems so that they can run during the operating hours and we're not at the, you know, not at the will of the water truck going to, to get another load of water. The water truck would still be on-site, but we'll continue to look at the automated sprinkling systems for our roadways to, to help impact, you know, to, to negate a dry road and, and a dusty condition.
So I don't know if you were, have been here since the quarry, when the quarry was active, but I've been there and I've watched the water sprinkler systems, they don't work well. They, some of them don't work at all, they, that's what you get.
But that's, and not to interrupt, sorry, sorry to interrupt. But that, that's a maintenance issue, and, and certainly the technology exists that we can use and, and varies across the United States and Canada. CRH companies are doing it today, and we will do it, and we will do it tomorrow, given a permit.
Thank you.
We will also address the once-a-day sweeping of the road. If that, you know, it needs to be an on-call basis, then that's what it is. You know, we, we, we're not here, I mean, total transparency, we have a sweeper in Cranston, Rhode Island, a million-ton quarry, and that, that, we're on-site all day. So if that's what it takes, then that's what we'll do.
Okay.
That's our commitment to the town.
Page 40, the asphalt plant, I just wrote Board of Health's jurisdiction. We regulate the stone going to the asphalt plant, not the plant itself, Board of Health does that. Page 41, crushing plants, again, part of Board of Health and Soil Board, but it's really the jurisdiction, dust control plan is in the zoning bylaw, already talked about that. Page 42, basically, again, I wrote self-regulate and hasn't worked out well for the town. This is why we're here. Number three, I already told you about it, being the dust mitigation plan approved by the Board of Health in the industrial zone in our zoning bylaw, Section 3.3.5, you have to adhere to that as well. Just bringing that to your attention. And number five, I have as number five, the PJ Keating has a public 24-hour phone line monitored by inter-in-service. When a call comes in, the appropriate manager is notified and they will call the person back. Any dust-related complaints about the quarry are logged in spreadsheet depending on the complaint. You'll go out there, examples of modifications, reducing material flow by 50%, extending water truck runtimes and things of the like. Again, I'll make this comment, that hasn't worked. We've been there, we've done that as well. You know, you, I don't know what you're doing as a new president of this corporation, what you're doing for manpower, the types of skills that you have people on. But I know there's been a lot of residents that have been disrespected in the past when complaints have gone in, and, and quite honestly, complaints have been ignored. So as the new president of this corporation, I would ask you to be very stringent on that as well. Develop a policy that's unexcusable to give a resident, I don't smell it, I don't see it, I don't anything of it. Again, if, if you do all of these things with dust, it's, it's, if we don't get those phone calls and them, them complaints, we can just renew your permit on an annual basis without having public hearings. I think ultimately, that's what PJ Keating wants. I think ultimately, that's what this soil board wants. I think ultimately, that's what the taxpayers of Acushnet want, right? We got a lot of money invested into this rodeo, we can't stop now. We can't, we can't take the foot off the gas pedal now. We're invested, and we're invested sometimes for the wrong reasons, but sometimes for the right reasons, and it's all about our residents. So, you know, I, I think that that's, that's something that needs to be addressed. And hopefully, we can move forward with developing a permit that's suitable for PJ Keating to continue operating that quarry in the town of Acushnet. Mr. Lona?
You just hit on something that's made me think when it comes to workforce and the levels that you have there. If you're operating at optimal capacity, right? Is your, is your staffing levels for maintenance and taking care of, you know, dust mitigation and things of that nature, are there industry standards that you must maintain? I'm just trying to get an understanding, like, are you understaffed? Could you, is this an opportunity to bring, create more jobs, bring more people to work on maintenance? And then the last question I have is, you know, in the past, have you had grievances brought out, brought against the corporation by the respective unions for not adhering to either the contracts that have been negotiated or working standards? Because I've been under the impression that there's been some of that in the past, right? Where the corporation hasn't been holding their end of the bargain when it comes to carrying out the contracts.
So I think, you know, to, to the grievances and the collective bargaining agreements that, you know, I think there's, there's always going to be a few things there. I, I believe that we've been able to resolve all of those matters. For the industrial hygiene components, we, we contract, and during the periods of operation, we do put pumps on our, air monitoring pumps on our employees. Not only do we do it, but the Mine Safety and Health Administration comes onto our mine sites and properties and puts, puts the pumps on the, on the employees. And, 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 and it's possible that a company can be cited, and if necessary, would be happy to, to provide some of those, those industrial hygiene results. Obviously, we would redact employee names from that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I, I would ask the, I mean, I don't know if that's so much part of the application, right? And I don't, I apologize, I just, I just don't want you to continue speaking on behalf of you being the president versus your employees and, and how you bargain and deal with unions, stuff like that, so.
I, I will tell you though, it's paramount for me, it's, it's our core value.
I, I, I understand where he's going, his question. I just don't want you to have to get too deep into, into talking about those kind of things. I get it, you're, you're, Mr. Lona's saying, I think it's important, your, your employees are being impacted by the dust and things of the like as well, right?
That's right. And we can, we can- We have, that there's appropriate staffing levels-
Yeah.
-to address, to deal with the volume. No different if this was a hospital or, or any other, you know, entity operating. We want to make sure that if you're gonna be working at X capacity, that there's the staff in place to handle. No different than the safety measures, so that was the nature of the-
Yeah, no, and it's a, it's a good point, right? And, you know, 35-plus full-time career jobs in that, in that quarry at the time. I think our biggest challenge will be, you know, if and when the permit is granted and we go back to work, it's gonna, it's not like going over and turning off the light switch. We, you know, we've lost, you know, the, the wealth and knowledge gap of all of those experienced miners have moved on to different, different roles in many cases. So it'll, it'll take us time, and I think that from a leadership standpoint, we're very cognizant of that. And what we don't want anybody to think is we're just gonna turn on the light switch and be back to what it was when we were performing it at a, at a level. Now, you know, at a certain level, whether, whatever that volume might be. So we need to, we, we need to stay committed to training and building skills back. Hopefully, we'll be able to retain some of those, some of those, those career jobs and, and employees that we had in the past, but, but we'll work on that. And to your point, you know, we're committed to capital, right? Because a lot of, a lot of the things that you're bringing up is money. And, and we need to be committed to spending time in labor, and whether that's overtime. We're committed to CapEx. As I mentioned previously, we're, we're over $3 million- As I mentioned previously, uh, we're, we're over three million dollars, uh, of capital expended, but we haven't been able to prove, uh, you know, its worth, right? So, you know, Selectment Gas Bar had mentioned, you know, the, the noise and dust barriers that we put on the, on the screening, on the screening towers, the, the covers that went back on the conveyors that were there previously. Uh, we just spent over five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on a state-of-the-art water truck for another facility. Again, putting our money where our mouth is, uh, because, you know, that state-of-the-art water truck, you know, versus a, a relic of the past that breaks down and, and all of that, this one, you know, it, and it also, uh, you know, has different functionality around it. So, so we're committed to doing those things, uh, in Akushnet as we are, uh, at CRH across the United States and North America and really around the globe. Um, and we're doing that at PJ Keating now. Like I said, you know, we're, we're putting over one-point-five-million dollars down into our Cranston facility just this year in, uh, in, in yellow iron, a new haul unit, a more efficient haul unit, um, and a, and a state-of-the-art water truck. So, we'll continue to look at those things and evaluate that, um, when it comes to, uh, the Akushnet facility and what that looks like.
Regarding that facility at Cranston, I, I would welcome the opportunity to do a site visit there.
Sure.
Someday.
Yeah, I'd be happy to...
Because I'd like to learn that.
Yeah.
Process there.
Be happy to show you that, or, you know, we've got, uh, a lot of other large, large quarries in the, in, you know, in Connecticut and, and, but we'd certainly be happy to take you over to Cranston, show you what we're doing there.
So, I'm almost done, ladies and gentlemen. The, I just have one question, and it's on reclamation. I didn't spend much time, um, for myself, um, with reclamation because that's, you know, you guys talk about fifty-year, um, duration, whether that's realistic or not. The first sentence in six-point-three-point-one, building, structure and equipment removal, it says, "Equipment used in mining and reclamation will be stored at designated areas of the site." And I wrote, what does that first sentence mean? So, that's kind of like towards the end when everything's all done and everything else and it just says, "Equipment used in mining and reclamation will be stored at designated areas on site. All quarry, operation, buildings and equipment in site features that do not support planned end-use will be dismantled, demolished and disposed of and recycled and off-site. Site features that support the planned end-use such as access road and access roads and fence and may be left in place." But, the first sentence says, "Equipment used in mining and reclamation will be stored at designated areas of the site." That's confusing.
Uh, can I get a mulligan on that one? And we'll rewrite that. I think the word, the wording there, uh, you know, we could have done, done better on that and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll...
All right, so this, this...
Yeah. We'll, we'll reword that.
It's not a major thing, I just, you know, reading.
Yeah.
My duty to read the application and try to do as much as I can with it.
You're seeing the trees in the, in the forest and we were just looking at the forest, so we'll, we'll clean that up. But, in the end, you know, the reclamation would be highest and best use and, and that would mean that, you know, in its end state, the, the screening towers that are there today would be gone, right?
Yeah, I got it.
There, there would be plantings, there would be, you know, the roads if they're not going to be used for a means to get out to a public walkway or, you know, community gardens, those are, those, those would be removed and, and again, highest best use. Maybe it's, uh, some sort of industrial park, whatever it might be, but, but we'll, we'll clean that up.
Page forty-two talks reclamation. Page forty-three to forty-five, you still talk reclamation. Page forty-six, six-point-seven, town bylaws, forty-six through forty-nine are basically waivers. I, I, I think, I don't know if we necessarily have to talk about all of that tonight. I think that peer review's gonna say a lot to this board. Um, I think you, you came out of the gate right away saying, "I think a lot of things need to be peer reviewed," right? I think I've said a lot of pages need to be peer reviewed. Quite honestly, you're right, I'm not a geologist, I'm not a hydrologist, I have no idea what some of this language is even being used in here. Um, I can assume certain things, but I'm, I'm not gonna waste my time trying to figure that out. I think that's for the experts to say. You had experts put this together, now we want experts to review it, um, through peer review, so, um, I don't know if we need to get into unless you, you feel inclined that you want to get into that, um, aspect of the application.
I think that, to us, that's probably, you know, not probably, it is an important piece and that's a, you know, if we could kind of maybe talk about guardrails around what that is, uh, with peer review, um, you know, should, should the town go out and pick three and, and, and the Keating Company pick three and, and, and then we get to, you know, kind of get to yes on, on what's acceptable, I, you know...
I think that's the, I think that, so I put a lot of thought into that as well. I, I think how to expedite the process as fast as possible is instead of the bylaw says that we can go out and pick, you know, peer-reviewed consultants, um, and then send them to you and then you're gonna go, "Um, yeah, we're gonna appeal it," and then you have to file an appeal process. So, a-again, I'm trying to figure this out the best way for the corporation and for the town to move forward. So, um, I'm all in favor of that, as long as it's okay with my colleagues. I think that you can, you surely throw three, three names, at least three names at us and we'll throw three back, um, you know, as long as there's no conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Um, we'll be asking that obvious question, right? Uh...
And we'll, I mean, it would make sense to, you know, just push that through to the legal teams.
So, TRC won't be one of your names.
TRCs will not be one of our names. Esconoco will not be one of yours.
Uh, what's that?
Esconoco will not be one of yours.
I had a feeling you were gonna say that, my friend. Uh, well, there it is, for the record.
Yeah. So, for, you know, we could certainly supply, uh, three names in fourteen days if that's acceptable. I know, like, I'll let, I'll maybe, I'll let, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna heel the floor to, to loop just a little bit and maybe some, some kind of guardrails here.
Yeah, just, I think what's being discussed makes perfect sense. Um, just to be clear, are we talking about getting proposals? You know, proposals from, say, from reengineering firms on each side or just suggesting names and then reaching out? Because...
I think it would be suggesting names and then reaching out.
Correct.
Yeah, like on our, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page of that. And then...
Can I ask you, what was that question again?
My question was whether we were just essentially exchanging a list of three names of engineering firms who Keating would suggest, "Hey, here's a list of three engineering firms that we think would be good peer review consultants," and then the town does the same, or if we were actually going to get proposals from three engineering firms. So, one is just us coming up with a list of engineering firms and then, once we've all agreed on one or two, we would go get proposals from them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, far.
Yeah. No, that's, I just wanted to make sure...
I mean, if, whatever, whatever's gonna work, I, I, you know, whatever, whatever's gonna work.
That's fine.
I'm wide open with that, it doesn't, it doesn't matter who, now, I owe it to me, how we do this. I mean, you, you guys can look at it and if one person's skills are, I think they're all gonna be pretty comparable in price. I don't think that's gonna deter PJ Keating. I'm going, "Well, wait a minute, that guy's five-thousand dollars more, let's not, let's argue that guy." As long as we can come to an agreement to expedite what, what the goal is here, I think that's what you're looking for, right? I think time is more of the essence than a few bucks.
Agreed. I, really, what I, I guess I was ultimately thinking of is, I just, I don't want to waste time, to your point, with all of us agreeing on one or two engineering firms, then going to those firms and finding they're not available, they can't.
I would ask, I would ask you this, Mr. Legia, seeing now you're their counsel. If you have two or three engineers for peer review, I would ask you to exchange that with our town council. Um, and then, we could, he could contact me and we'll have that conversation with Mr. Kelly or whatever it might come up with, how, and how we're gonna do that. I think it's only coming to an agreement of who's peer reviewing, so I have no problems with that, but if you try to call our office and we're short-staffed and everything else, I don't want anything else holding you up. So, if you were just, Mr. Blake, is that okay with you? That, that's the way that's going?
That makes per-perfect sense.
Peer review, you exchange that with, between the two attorneys?
Perfect.
And Mr. Blake, I'm on speed dial, right?
I, I would like Mr. Kelly, though, to be part of that process. It should be almost like when you're doing a, a blind bid, right? Like, we'll have our three, you have your three and we're opening them up at the same time. Ideally, one of them are in, in the same queue of each, of each. I mean, I don't necessarily feel like we need to go into a shotgun wedding, we gotta get this right. Peer review is probably the most important part of this process, so it's gonna be transparent and, you know, I'd like to make sure that Mr. Kelly is part of that.
I'm happy to copy Mr. Kelly on all this and...
I think, and I think probably to that end, you know, not just throwing some names out there, but Doug just whispered in my ear, that really what we should do is, you know, we'll put something relative to request for qualifications, right? So, what we don't want is an engineer, we're not gonna throw out an engineering firm that's a vertical engineering firm, you know, doing high-rises in Boston, right? We want, we want the qualifications for somebody, for the firms and, and if, we may find that it's difficult to find six in, in the area that are, that are really good in the, you know, and qualified in mining, right?
That's right. They have to have that qualification, right? So, that's even better for all of us, right?
Yeah.
So, if you have four...
Right.
Um, it's, it makes the process that much easier.
So, we'll do that. What we'll do is, we'll, we'll come back to you, to your team with a request, with kind of the, the guardrails of qualification, you know, X number of years of experience or, and, and that sort of thing. And, and then from there, we can agree on that and then we can go out and, and maybe even one of the questions is, "Are you available?" Right? Because if somebody says, you know, if we find the most qualified, but they say they're busy for two years, that's probably not very, that's not, certainly not helpful for the Keating organization.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll do that.
We'll leave that.
Yeah, it's perfect.
Attorneys and, and Mr. Kelly could be CC'd on it as well, so we can inform the board and, you know, what's going on. So, did you, did you wanna... Town bylaws and you got page forty-six to forty-nine is waivers. Do you wanna have any kind of discussion on that? Can I, if you want me to ask a question first to see if we can end that conversation?
If there's a specific question you have, we will do our best to address it right now, certainly.
So, so there's, that, that request has been put in the application, right?
Correct.
So, I would ask you, as the, the legal team, under what statute do we have the right to waive?
So, it's my opinion that really any permit granting authority, such as the soil slash Selectment here tonight, has inherently some authority, some power to be able to waive provisions of, say, a bylaw or a statute or regulations that they are tasked with implementing. Certainly, that would be true if, in my view anyways, the interests that the, say, bylaw, we'll talk about in terms of bylaw, that the bylaw provision is intended to protect are met or just obviously wouldn't apply to a particular type of use. Certainly, I also think that's true where a bylaw provision had been found to be, say, illegal, if you have a court ruling saying, "Well, we're striking that provision of the bylaws." Of course, the board could waive. Uh, similarly, if a particular provision of a bylaw being applied to a property owner would result in a regulatory taking of their property, again, I think that's another really good example of a situation where a board's inherent authority to waive that bylaw provision would apply. So, what might make the most sense, um, to be able to answer this question more fully, hopefully put the board's minds at ease at least, sort of answer the question maybe a little better than I can here off the cuff tonight. As we're preparing our responses to the questions that have been presented tonight, we're certainly expecting we're gonna get more, I would propose to present the board with a legal memo on that issue. Certainly, town council obviously will look at it. Mr. Blake can tell you if he thinks I'm right, if I'm wrong, somewhere in between. Um, so, that's my answer to your question. I do think you absolutely have that authority and I'm happy to follow up with a written memo to really flesh that out.
If there's any, if there's any case law, um, that's out there?
That would all be part of it.
You know, Legia versus Gaspah kind of things, right? I mean, I've seen it before, I've read case law before, I see examples in case law where it always references, you know, Legia versus Gaspah, eighteen-seventy-three, and there's a case law there, right? To say, "This is how it happened, this was brought up." Mr., Mr. Blake, um, he's nodding his head, "Yes, that's the way it works." So, if you're aware of anything like that...
Absolutely. And that's exactly what I'm envisioning, is a memo where I'm giving you legal authority for the ideas I presented to you here now, so you're not just taking my word for it, you actually have, say, a court of law to your point.
We have high attorney bills, so I'm trying to keep that down, so I'm using you to do that work.
I'm happy to read that, guys.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have anything else other than, basically, um, I'm prepared to make a motion as the chairman, um, but Mr. Hinkley, if he's got anything that he wants to, to say, if he's heard enough, um, based on everything that's been said tonight.
Mr. Jamin, if I may?
Mr. Hinkley?
I've been observing a lot of this from the outside. As you know, I haven't been on this board a year yet. Um, and before I was elected, I spent a lot of time talking to residents and paying attention, um, just to see how their quality of life was. And to touch back on Chairman Gaspah's point earlier, as the new president, you have the obligation to listen and make sure that regardless of the complaint, they feel heard. Um, and just dealing with you in the short amount of time, I can say that you seem very responsive, which I appreciate. Um, anytime we've reached out to you, you've responded and that is showing a lot and I appreciate that. And I know we, as a board, do, um, the town needs to feel like it's appreciated as well. Uh, so, all I ask is that you listen to their concerns and if you don't have an answer, find them the answer. And that's all I have to say.
Duly noted. Nothing.
Well, I, you know, at, at this point, um, I think you've, you've gone through the application, we're gonna send it off to peer review. There's a number of questions that have been asked, I'm assuming that they're gonna come back to us in written form. Um, the legal memo, when I get it, I'll review it, I'll give you, uh, my opinion on their legal, uh, on his legal opinion and we'll go from there.
Uh, if I may, just, uh, one final question. Mr. Gaspah, you had a, a really lengthy list of questions. Um, I've been furiously scribbling my notes here to try to...
No, you're not getting my notes.
I'm not, I'm not asking for your notes.
No, I'll give it to you.
But if we could just get in writing a list of the questions you posed, obviously, the peer reviewer's gonna have a whole host of questions as well for TRC to address, but just to make sure there was nothing lost in translation, if we could get those in writing.
So, I have a lot of handwritten stuff after the fact that I printed it? So, I'll go back to the printed version and give that to you, okay? Because you can't see my notes.
No, that, we're not, we're not asking for your notes, just, just the questions so we don't, don't get them wrong.
And I would just kind of comment on, on the full circle and being responsive. Um, some of the questions, I think both of us, uh, agreed, uh, that, that these are peer-review questions. So, when we respond back to some of the questions, like, for example, going back and looking at, at, uh, what was in, you know, what was the elevation and size of the footprint of the quarry in nineteen-eighty-nine, right? So, you know, those, those sort of things we can certainly do. If there are questions that, you know, really should be vetted or answered through peer review, we'll, we'll respond accordingly.
Yeah, that don't need to be answered by peer review. I think I got just more of a personal question for you folks, um, for my own knowledge so that I can share some of the ideas that are going on inside of this little bean, um, on how we get to the end game with PJ Keating, right?
I just don't want to be, you know, I, I certainly want us to be responsive, not drag things out, but there might be some questions that you posed tonight that we think are best answered through the peer review or, for example, like the stormwater one, we're gonna wanna go back and do a diagram.
Yeah, I totally, I totally get that. Right? So, I'll make a, you gentlemen all set?
Good, sir.
Make a motion, is there a motion to, for a, I'll make a joint motion to peer review the application for completeness on behalf of the Board of Selectment and Soil Board.
Show moves.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we just want to make sure we did it that way, for completeness, just making sure that everything's in check, and they can go through the whole application and look things through. We have some time. I mean, I don't know how the folks, like, are you guys, are you guys, hold on one second, are you guys happy with where we're at right now?
I would think the only thing that we want to do is, you know, with, with all things, we want to try to, I, being a guy who built roads growing up on the great stakes, and, I'm a milestone guy. So I like to know, like, when, when's the next meeting, you know, what, you know, and so that, because we, we get lost in our lives, it could be a long time, and I'd like to try to at least seize the opportunity that we have today. We talked a little bit about fourteen days, trying to get, you know, peer review out in front, but, you know, perhaps we could set a milestone and say, you know, next meet, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna come back together in a working session, whatever it might be, thirty days from now, or, or whatever, but I think it's important we try to get a cadence going, so we don't lose momentum, and we hold ourselves to task, because if, you know, I was a bit of a procrastinator in college, so, you know...
I'll get, so I was gonna, you know, obviously, it's a public hearing, right? So I have to, it's, we've been here for an hour and a half. I'm going to ask, there's, there's probably some folks in the audience that want to speak, if you just show hands, so I have an idea. Well, there's only a few hands that are being held for right now in the public hearing, so you know what, I'll open it up to the, to the public for questions and comments, right? And before we leave, so that you'll have that to run home and do a little bit of homework on as well, maybe there for us, maybe there for you. And, and based on the next meeting, I would judge it based on how far we got with the general public tonight. If I had a hundred people standing up, that's problematic, and I would have to continue just for that reason, right? But we could figure it out when we get to the end of this.
Okay. Good, yeah, I mean, I mean, to me, it's the milestone. We may need to move it, but if we put something on a calendar, we're saving that time for, for the town and for, for us, and, and our engineering consultants, right?
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
Perfect. Well, I'll yield the floor. Thank you for your time.
And more importantly, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Because we've done a legal notice, we do have to continue to a time and date certain. So before this meeting adjourns, you will have a time and date certain.
Perfect.
That would be under the continuance provision inside the bylaw. Kushner residents, I'll take questions, comments, concerns. Please come to the podium, say your name. If you're comfortable giving your address, you can do that. Mr. Blake, do I need, do I need name and address of anybody who speaks tonight?
Probably should have a name and address for the record.
My name's Kevin Smith. I live on one sixty-one Lawson Avenue. I've come here, I'm listening to everything that they're saying, and when all this mess started, almost four years ago now, not two or three, almost four years, we sat down with the president of PJ, not the president of PJ Keating, but the management at this facility, there was a group of five of us, and they came out, and everything, like we just heard tonight, was all nice, nice. Hopefully, this is what they're going to do, is what, what they say now with the new CEO that they have, because they've heard all this before. They start out, they want to do it, and then all of a sudden, it goes back to the lawyers because they got more money than any of us in this town together. They can drag things out, just like we did last year. They had a problem, they stuffed the asphalt plant right up our, you know what? When we asked them not to put it there because of exactly what happened, they came out, they promised this is dust mitigation plan? Now, all of a sudden, that's going to, we can't do that. I mean, this isn't rocket science. As far as an automated sprinkler system, yeah, they have one over there, two-inch pipe through it. It works when it wants, but there's no maintenance. The last thing they want to do is send somebody out there to fix all this stuff. The dust piles have no dust on it. And yes, I did move next to a quarry when I bought my house forty-one years ago, but it was a third of the size of what it is now, and it progressively gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Now with this new plan, they're going to be fifteen hundred feet from my house blasting and mining. I haven't really said it, it's like, okay, they're a business, I'm not anti-business, all these people back here, they all have jobs. They've been out of work for three years now, some of them, because of PJ Keating. Because we could have easily solved this instead of them saying, basically, I'm not doing it. I don't want to do it, we're going to take and push it as far as we can. Now, all this comes up, all nice, hopefully, they do it. I still want to know, as I've said before, there are seven instances of cancer on my street on Lawson Avenue, within three hun- a thousand feet. Is that caused by the dust that's been coming over for decades? If it isn't, then we go away. The state, we, we did pay, the town did get a funding from the state, I want to make sure that that's going to be finished, as an independent study, not through PJ Keating.
Can you explain that?
There was, we, there were dust monitors when they were closed down. There were dust monitors put out to monitor the air quality around the quarry.
I get it.
Okay? I mean, we've been pushing for this fifteen years to find out the, the cases of cancer and everything else. The state doesn't want to help us, nobody wanted to help us until you guys went to bat for us. As far as your water quality, the southeast corner that you're talking, south, yes, southeast corner you're talking about, there's a natural spring that runs from behind Alden Court, comes up out of the ground, comes down through the back of my property, and goes out that pipe. In, I want to say two thousand, my daughter's senior college, uh, high school, I had twelve inches of water in my cellar. Had no idea, yes, we had torrential rains like we've had, had no idea what all this was about. Happened to be at a Christmas party up the street, and there was a worker from PJ Keating saying, oh, yeah, if we shut off the pipes on this street, the water will be out to Lawson Avenue. So I started doing some looking around. I have pictures of all that pipe when it was blocked off by PJ Keating. They put a steel plate across it to block it off, they just didn't expect the rain that we had. These, you know, these are the things, you know? I, I did go over, and to their credit, when I brought it up, they came right over, and I think it was Ian, he was a young kid from Ireland that came over, and we resolved the issue right away. It shouldn't get that. All I want to see is them be a good neighbor. That's all I ask for. Be a good neighbor, keep the dust down. We have a problem, don't just talk to us like we're idiots. That's what happened. You know, I may not be the brightest bulb, but I'm not stupid. The people that were with me were not stupid, there were some educated people in us, and they just looked down on us, and we're going to do what we want. They say asphalt is not toxic. Asphalt is toxic. What about cement? Cement's caustic. You can't work with cement without having gloves, can you? You put your hands in it, you'll burn the skin off, you'll have burns all over your hands. All we want, just be honest and upfront with us, and do what you say you're going to do. Thank you.
Good evening, Douglas Thomas, South Main Street, prefer not to use my house number.
That's fine. I know where you live.
Yes, you do, Kevin. What I have here is I've collected signatures on two separate documents. One is for the proposal for PJ Keating's expansion of the quarry with opposition signatures from people in the surrounding neighborhood from PJ Keating. And I'd like to submit that to Chairman Gaspar to read, as well as the, the special considerations or to their application, as well as opposition with signatures. As Kevin stated, we've asked these, this business to be good neighbors. It hasn't happened, we're skeptical whether it will happen. We've obviously seen these people put the cart before the horse. They should have never moved the asphalt plant three hundred feet from the road. It was the worst thing, worst business decision a company could have made in a community, in a town, in the town of Akushin. It absolutely is not the monument that Kushtan is now known for, that people drive by and they see these silos. Shame on for the people that actually signed that documentation after putting the cart before the horse. It would have been in the best interest for PJ Keating to leave the operation at the back of their facility. We tolerated it, we dealt with it. Instead, they brought these problems to the table, moving this facility three hundred feet to the roadway. I am, was willing to work and willing to be a good neighbor to be, to PJ Keating, until they did what they did. I, I really think we need to step back and take a look. How did this happen? Why did this happen? And what are we going to do about this? That seems to be a question unanswered. We're going to look at this for the next fifty years, an asphalt production plant, three hundred feet from the road. Giant mistake. I, I really think we need to step back and take a look. Is this really something we want to look at for the next fifty years? I'm asking for the board to really step back, consider this, talk to these people, and see if there's a resolution. Does it really need to be there? Save them a couple of dollars. This is the health and well-being that's in this neighborhood across the street from the senior center. Parents, grandparents visit here, we're going to smell this. Worst thing, we smelt it when it was in the back of the facility. And again, shame on the people that signed that documentation to allow this to happen. We wouldn't be here if this didn't happen. This is my opinion, and my opinion only. And I would like to give this to you, Chairman Gaspar. You want me to read this, Mr. Thomas? I, I would like you to read that. Yes, sir. Sound of Akushin's Soil Board, one twenty-two Main Street. Attention, Kevin Gaspar, Chairman, March fifth, two thousand twenty-three, PJ Keating Quarry Expansion Application. Dear Chairman Gaspar, we are writing to you today to request that PJ Keating be required to file an environmental notification form as required by the MEPA regulations contained in three oh one CMR eleven point oh oh of the state's environmental regulations. EIR requirement under the acts, any project that contains in EJ population in whole or in part within the designated geographic area, DGA, of the project site is required to submit an environmental impact report, EIR, in accordance with three oh one CMR eleven point oh six, seven B. In most cases, the DGA will encompass a one-mile radius of the project site. However, if the project is anticipated to exceed MEPA review thresholds at three oh one CMR eleven point oh three eight A dash B, or generate a hundred and fifty or more new average daily trips of diesel vehicle traffic over a duration of one year or more, excluding public transit trips, then the DGA will encompass a five-mile radius of a project site. The DGA should be drawn from the outermost limits of the work. You want me to read the, the whole entire thing? Please, if you would. Eleven point oh three, thresholds. The review of thresholds identify categories of projects or aspects thereof of a nature, size, or location that are likely directly or indirectly to cause damage to the environment, except when the secretary requires fail-safe review. The review thresholds determine whether MEPA review is required. MEPA review is required when one or more review thresholds are met or exceeded in the subject matter of at least one review threshold is within MEPA jurisdiction. A review threshold that is met or exceeded specifies whether MEPA review shall consist of an ENF in a mandatory EIR, or of an ENF other than MEPA review if the secretary so Land, one, ENF in mandatory EIR. Direct alteration of fifty or more acres of land unless the project is consistent with an improved conservation farm plan or forest cutting plan, or similar generally accepted agricultural or forestry practices. Creation, number two, creation of ten or more acres of impervious area. B, ENF and other MEPA review if the secretary so requires. Direction alteration of twenty-five or more acres of land unless the project is consistent with an improved conservation farm plan or forest cutting plan, or other similar generally accepted agricultural or forestry practices. PJ, and I don't know if this is in this thing, but it says PJ Keating's quarry expansion plans clearly exceed this threshold requiring review. Two, creation of five or more acres of impervious area. PJ Keating's quarry expansion plans exceed this threshold for review, and review is required. Two, timely filing. In all cases, the proponent shall file the ENF sufficiently prior to commencement of the project and any required agency action to allow timely compliance with MEPA and three oh one CMR eleven point oh oh, including analysis of alternatives, considerations, and cumulative environmental impacts in providing meaningful opportunities for public review. Four, environmental justice populations. If a project requires MEPA review in accordance with three oh one CMR eleven point oh one, and one or more environmental justice populations are located within the designated geographic area around the project, the proponent shall undertake measures to provide public involvement opportunities for such environmental justice populations. In a note, it says PJ Keating has failed to recognize the EJ community in their application and denies any impact of any kind. In fact, Keating seeks waivers not to allow, not, that will not allow them to impact the EG community and others. Descriptions of the project and potential impacts, the ENF shall include a concise but accurate description of the project and its alternatives, identify any review thresholds the project may meet or exceed in any agency action it may require. Present the proponent's initial assessment, potential environmental impacts, proposed mitigation measures indicate whether the project is reasonably likely to negatively affect any environmental justice populations located in the whole or in part with the project's designated geographic area, and what measures were taken prior to, to the filing of the ENF to provide meaningful opportunities for public involvement by such environmental justice populations. And may include a proposed scope. The ENF may, shall also identify to all languages spoken by five percent or more of the residents who identify as not speaking English very well in any sentence tract that is located in whole or in part within the designated geographic area around the quarry. PJ Keating's filings was not made available to the EJ community in any other language other than English. The application was not published or submitted in paper form. May residents do not have internet access and the skills to navigate the requirements to view the application. This is a major expansion extending quarry operations for another fifty years, and needs a full and robust review to protect the environment and the community. The residents within a large radius have been seriously impacted by odor, noise, dust, truck traffic, and diesel emissions from the operation of seventy-two South Main Street. The site is not being operated in compliance with state and local permits and approvals. The town has spent over two hundred thousand in taxpayer funds to force compliance by PJ Keating. PJ Keating in the, in their application clearly states that the permit sought is for the expansion of the quarry, which triggers the MEPA process. A full MEPA review and environmental impact report must be required as part of the permitting process of this project, and must be required, must be required by the Soil Board as a permit condition, respectively submitted by the members of EG community and other impacted residents surrounding the quarry. There's roughly fifteen signatures. So Selectman Gaspar, what we're asking for is this to be thoroughly gone through by the professionals? What's that? To be dissected, all of this? The application? Terminology, the application. Look at all of the information that is provided in there, have them dissect it, have them go through it before any consideration of any application is considered for PJ Keating, of any expansion, application, removal of goods, sale of goods, et cetera. We stand in strong opposition for any of this. Thank you for your time.
Can I speak? That be all right? I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt anything.
Well, I was next.
Can you just let her go first? She had a hand up before. I guess my, my colleagues told me her end up.
So Cheryl Hall, I live on Rivet Street.
I've attended as many of these meetings historically. Are we good?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. So I've attended as many of these meetings as I possibly can given my work schedule and that. I have been upfront since day one that I have no desire to shut down PJ Keating. I've just always wanted them to be a good neighbor. We have a new president who is, you know, honestly talking a good game. I met, I was with Kevin, and we met with folks prior over PJ Keating. At one point, folks from PJ Keating came to my house because every time they were running, we figured out was their conveyor belts, my entire house was shaking. I have actual audio recordings of my house shaking. When they came over, they said that they had one broken spring. Now, I don't know a lot about, you know, conveyor belts and all that. My husband does. After the fact, it turned out that there was something like sixteen broken springs or something to me outrageous. So when I hear you talk about maintenance, for me, I need a legitimate written commitment that you will upkeep, make sure that the equipment is running as it should. Whether it be clogged, you know, poorly functioning water spritzers or a conveyor belt that has broken springs so it's vibrating my entire home, that to me is unacceptable. Then when you add to that the dust that... So for last summer, I didn't have a, I don't know, a thousand-dollar electric filter because I didn't have to run my filter on my pool twenty-four-seven because if not, it was like you were swimming at the beach, so much sand in my pool. That's all I, honestly, that's all I ask. That's all I've ever asked, is that you be a good neighbor. I want to believe that you will be a good neighbor. I really do because I want to get along with everybody. I feel bad for people that are out of work. I would not wanna be out of work. But I need to trust that you're not just giving us lip service yet again. That's all I have.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Michael Ventara. I live at 50 Giat Street in Krishna, which isn't too far from here. I live in this town. I'm a taxpayer, but I'm also an employee of Keating. And I hear everybody saying, well, all we want to do is be good neighbors. But every time we're here trying to ask for a chance to be a good neighbor, and it seems like people are trying everything they can to throw roadblocks in our way. I don't understand it. I mean, I feel bad for the people, most of them to my right, that live next to the quarry. And it's grown, yeah. But everything grows, and there's nothing you can really do about it. You live next to a business, it's gonna grow. And we've had all this stuff with lawyers and all these bylaw changes. Who's gotten hurt? People like me that live in this town, that work for Keating. All the people out there back there. They're all hard-working people. We get up at five o'clock in the morning. We come home at seven o'clock at night. We don't see our families for a long time. We're all trying to work and make a living. Everybody says, yeah, we just want to be good neighbors, and I feel sorry for them. But do you really feel sorry? Because every time, every chance you get, you throw a roadblock in our way. We have a new president of the company. We have new people in, you know, running things. Give us a chance to do what we need to do, and we'll prove to you that we're gonna be good neighbors. I don't, I'm not a scientist. I'm not a politician like you guys. All that technical stuff, I have no idea about. I've never even worked in the quarry side. I've worked in the paving side. But the only people that are getting hurt here is everybody back there and all of us that work here. I understand, you know, they have to deal with us, all that stuff. I don't wish them any harm. Honestly, I, they may think they're getting cancer from inhaling the dust. But everybody that I work with, I know here, none of them are sick. None of them are ill or anything like that. And we all inhale it all day. We inhale asphalt fumes. We inhale dust. We inhale all that stuff. It's not the greatest thing in the world, but it's not. I mean, can you prove that it caused you cancer? Can you prove that it caused your heart problems or whatever? No, you can't. Because if they could, PJ Keating would be shut down forever. All I want is for my company to be able to come back to work. You know, we, you know more than I do about all the things they've done over there to make things better for everybody. So I just felt that as a town resident and an employee of Keating, I should get up and say something because it seems like every time we have a meeting, like the last meeting we had, nobody was even allowed to talk. It was all done, sealed, and we all showed up for nothing. We didn't even get to speak.
I wasn't a gym.
Okay, I'm just saying. I just wanted to make, put my point across that.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
It's not just...
I think everything you just said is what I said in the opening remarks, right? It's time to get people back to work. It's time for Mr. Hill to take responsibility of his new, of the corporation he's president of. And let's figure out a way to get you guys back to work and operate that as a business.
All right, well, let's address the elephant in the room now. Sometimes, no matter what you do, people already have their mind made up. So you can pass a million bylaws. We could be open bankers hours, eight to four. One, two trucks come in. People are against quarries. They think we're the bad guy, that's it. They're not, they're not, they don't wanna hear it. So all I'm asking you guys to do is be fair. That's all. Be fair to us, be fair to the company. Be fair to everybody that works here. You know what I mean? Our work is to make a living. I can't do anything about the decisions they made to buy where they, where they live. I mean, I don't live that far away from the quarry too. And when I'm not working nights, I'll pave the highways. I can hear trucks go by. But what am I gonna do? I bought my house, that's where I live. You have to, I'm not saying that, you know, we have no responsibility. But you've gotta take a little bit of responsibility too for your decisions as well. And that's all I have to say.
South Main Street. We're not against you guys. We want you to work, okay? I can speak, I'm sure, on a lot of residents that get really frustrated when you say, then you shouldn't have bought a house next to the quarry. When I bought my house thirty years ago, it didn't have that. And don't tell me, well, you should think, because they're talking about fifty years, and they don't know what's gonna happen, okay? They don't know. It's the same thing. Think about that. You're telling us that we should have thought about that, but they don't know what's gonna go on in fifty years. We're not against them. We just, and you're saying that we're still holding you back. We're not. They're holding you back. Yes, they are. Because they're not doing what they're supposed to do. They haven't done the things that they have to do.
If somebody's speaking, let their speaker speak to the board. If you're here to listen, if you want your turn to talk, you can come to the podium and speak to the board.
If they were doing what they're supposed to do, they would be open. It has, nobody's trying to shut them down, stop them. If they were doing what they're supposed to do and it didn't impact the residents the way it does, they would be open.
We wouldn't be here.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna come to the podium?
Christian Nusza, 46th floor of Keating. I just hope that the board takes into strong consideration the opposition from the residents. We're the ones that suffer the abuse directly that's created at the quarry. There is, in my estimation, a hundred and fifty dwellings within three hundred feet alone. I can't imagine how, how much impact they feel. So going forward, the way that the permit has been given at this point is when will we ever have an opportunity to live on our properties? This, this isn't just the residents against the quarry. The town of Akushinet has to take a lot of responsibility for what's transpiring here as well. The amount of expansion that has been allowed at that facility is directly affecting everyone. And if I'm not mistaken, there's gonna be more dwellings built surrounding the quarry. You know, it's, it's a double-edged sword. I realize the town and the board is in the middle, but there's gotta be a happy medium somewhere, okay? And it can't be all one side or the other. That's understandable. But I think as representatives of the residents that abused by this facility, I hope you take that into strong consideration moving forward. And hopefully, when there is a, an application, a final application, that this, that this process remains open and transparent, that everyone has an opportunity to review whatever is the final application on this situation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it all right if I make one more comment? Is that all right? Do I get two shots at the apple?
Two shots because you were denied the last time you were here. But not by me.
All I wanna say is that when I hear people go back and forth between the residents, the company, the town, whatever, it doesn't feel like we're trying to do the right thing. It feels more like it's a revenge mission for what management did in the past. Are we really trying to work together to get to where we need to be? Are we gonna keep holding grudges about what the past president did or the past quarry manager did? I mean, when I hear people talk, I don't hear them being sincere. It just feels like a revenge mission to me. That's all I wanna say.
So I, I think after hearing PJ Keating speak, I would hope after hearing what I had to say, and I know after hearing what the residents have said and some of the workers have said, I think that we're all pretty much aligned with the same target goal, right? How do we coexist as a town and a business to that facility? I think we're gonna figure this out. I know we're gonna figure this out. There's no question in my mind. I'll do whatever it takes. I've lost, I don't know, town council. You wanna tell them how many hours over the last couple of years I spent dealing with this issue? I banged my head off the wall for hundreds and thousands of hours trying to figure this out. I'm not giving up now. We will come to a resolution, I believe, that works for the company but has to work for the residents as well. And that's the goal that I'm out for. There is a way to coexist. We've done it for a long time, ladies and gentlemen. We can't be those people that sit around, as that gentleman said, where, you know, they get a permit, they open back up, and oh, the wrong colored truck went down the road. Call the town hall and scream and yell and complain. I don't think that's what, what the residents here are here for. They didn't do it in the past. They did it because they were being neglected by previous management. We are giving Mr. Hill an opportunity. I spoke to Mr. Hill personally tonight on your behalf about the dust, and that's really what this is all about. The smells, the odors, and everything else, right? I hope he gets it. Look, I was quite honest with, you know, at some point, when we issue a permit, there'll be conditions on that permit, right? We're gonna, we're gonna figure this out. This board's gonna figure out the best path forward. And, and you know, I, I think we start small, and they earn their way back up, is how I have it in my head, right? You know, I've, I've always been taught by a pretty smart man, a hundred, you want fifty percent of something or a hundred percent of nothing? And right now, the way I look at it is you got a hundred percent of nothing. We'll figure this out. We're gonna make it work. And, and you know, as you become good stewards, you know, I, maybe we increase the amount of tonnage, whatever it may be. I have some ideas in my head. The board's, it's not been known. I guess I'm spilling a little bit of my beans right now. But we, they have to prove what capacity it is that triggers all those nuisance conditions amongst our residents, right? And I think that's what we're gonna try to derive as, what number does that mean? Is it 1.2 million tons a year? I can tell you it's not 1.2 million tons a year as proposed inside this application, ladies and gentlemen, because if that's what they were doing in the past, they screwed that all up. That's over. We gotta come back. We gotta, we gotta bring that back. We gotta figure out what that number is gonna be. That they're not gonna be spewing dust all over the neighborhoods, right? And making nuisance conditions. I don't want, I don't wanna be contacting Mr. Hill or any member of PJ Keating's staff going, hey, we're coming with a cease and desist because you're ignoring my residents every other week. That's not how this town's supposed to be functioning with a business like this. And that business shouldn't have to worry about the town coming after them every week because of a nuisance condition, because somebody's crying, you know, because a little pebble landed on their car windshield on the windshield wiper blade. It could've came from anywhere. I've been through a lot. I've listened to a lot of complaints. I've addressed a lot of people's complaints. I have a good handle on what the hell's going on in these neighborhoods. I really do. I've talked to a lot of you folks. I see a lot of familiar faces, and you know I've been out there dealing with this crap. I'm not happy about where we're at either, just like a lot of you folks. I'm not happy like a lot of those workers are because they were put out of work because of this crap. So let's figure it all out. That's what we're all supposed to be here to do, is figure this crap out and hopefully have a happy medium and that's, that's workable for everybody. That's, that's my ultimate goal. And I hope that that's your ultimate goal as well, Mr. Hill.
Kevin, can I just add one more thing?
Sure. As long as you're not gonna make me read it. It'll be short and sweet from a business aspect. What I would like is a question directly to PJ Keating. What have you showed this town in good faith? You are a man of your word. That an inspector can walk in there and address an issue from the past that is now taken care of, whether it's the state-of-the-art water truck, an irrigation system, the removal of the silt piles. Those are the things from a business aspect that you should be showing this town, the councilmen, the residents of this neighborhood of good faith. This is a show, a showpiece. This is what we're willing to do. It's not after the fact, after the fact, we're gonna go buy a water truck. After the fact, we're gonna do an irrigation. After the fact, that we asked you to remove the silt piles that are still there. This after effect needs to go away. We want something in good faith from this business. Show us the shiny water truck. Give the residents something, something to grasp onto as a man of your word to your company, to your workers. This is what you're willing to do, is spend their money and buy that state-of-the-art water truck. That's what I'm asking, Kevin. It's no more smoking mirrors. And I think that would go the longest way.
I, I, you know, I wanna comment on that. I agree with what you're saying, Doug, but, you know, PJ Keating, I've seen it with my own two eyes. They have made significant investments. I'm not saying we're there yet, right? I'm not by any means trying to take anybody's side. But I mean, anybody can drive by South Main Street and look up and see all the dust covers, all the, all the, you know, the big steel thing, whatever that is around the crushing plant to stop noise. The truck wheel wash, I think that was 250, $300,000, maybe better. They've made some significant...
Some.
Look, we're getting there, right? I mean, they're not open. We're working on a permit. We're gonna have that dialogue with PJ Keating and their team and say, look, you know what? This is what we want. This is, this is where you need to be. That's part of this process, Doug. It's, it's not all, and I'm dying to say this to people. I've been dying to say this, and I don't give a damn who it hurts, okay? But I have to tell the people the truth, and that's my job, okay? This is not all PJ Keating's fault, first and foremost.
And I agree, Kevin. I agree.
The town has shared responsibilities. Over the years, certain individuals didn't do their job. That's not PJ Keating's fault. They're not, they should, just like I told them, you can't self-regulate yourself. They shouldn't be self-policing themselves. And I got a major problem with certain individuals not being held accountable for those actions or inactions over the last five or six years. I don't forget that meeting at the Ford Middle School when all you folks booed the past fire chief when he said they didn't know. And that was the truth, and he got booed, okay? They never told us because in the bylaw it says that the inspector's supposed to come back and tell the board, hey, they're in good standing or they're not. We just got the permit. It was like everything's hunky-dory, and we kept signing it every year, every year, every year. Okay? We were kept in the dock for whatever reasons, I don't know. But the moral of the story is, is there's shared responsibilities for why we are here today, my friend. And it's not all their fault. And I get it. And we wanna be able to point the finger to somebody. But I have to get that off my chest, that this town has a shared responsibility for its negligence to those people that are in the room that have been affected by this quarry.
And I agree. I'm 100% on board with that, Kevin. I, there's not a bone in my body that disagrees with that. And yes, unfortunately, we've inherited these, these problems for many, many years. Hopefully, one day, we'll get to the bottom of this. But I'm all, all I'm saying is, is that word, good faith. And I, I think that would go a long way.
And I, I think that would go a long way with everyone, to get the ball rolling, so to speak.
We're gonna make this right, my friend, one way or another. I promise you that. I've been at this for a long time.
I know you have.
So, I'm not giving up now. We'll get, we're gonna get this right. This board, I am confident in this board, that we will get this soil board permit application right.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to say something?
I'm sorry?
We gotta continue the meeting to a time and date certain. April 4th.
Huh?
April 4th.
No, I won't be around. I don't think I'm gonna be around April 4th. So, so, Mr. Hill or Mr. Legia, let me ask you a question, because we said you like milestones?
Milestones.
All right. So, let's stay on that path, okay? To keep this process while it's fresh in everybody's head. You said you wanted 14 days for to pick peer review engineers, is that correct?
Correct. And qualifications, which will get that.
Okay. So, if we can get that done in 14 days, we'll be doing all right, right? Because you have to send us over some qualifications or...
And then it'll take us 14 days to respond.
So, Mr. Kelly, Mr... Hello?
I did, we're kinda working through it. Do you think we could do?
So, wait, wait, I'm, I'm, forget about that. He's talking to me, and it's my job to talk to you, okay?
Okay.
Communications and milestones, right? Mile markers, whatever the hell you said. So, 14 days to get peer reviews of the aging exchanges, exchange, right? And then how long, if any of your team has any expertise or anybody, how long do you think it would take them to peer review an application? You need to give us, don't forget about the topographical plans with contours, existing condition plans and things of the like. Please don't give me topographical and existing condition plans from 1990, okay? It's today. So, the way I see this happening is when we see everything today, and we got all those pitches and plans in place, every year, we'll be able to see what's changed, right? And that's how we're gonna hold you accountable.
We can do that with a draw.
There'll be, there'll be certain things that come out of this mouth on how we're gonna do things as far as the amount of weights go. Because right now, I don't know what measurement we're using, just whatever that comes over to Scalehouse, and here, here's your, here's your pieces of paper. That's not working out well for us. So, we, I got some ideas on that as well, to keep everybody accountable on how much is being drawn out of that pit, okay? So, again, we'll figure this thing out together. But you want 14 days. Do you think 14 days from, you're gonna pick a peer review? And do you think, what are you shaking your head for? Speak. That's Mr. Kelly, Town Administrator.
The board has to meet to appoint the peer review. If they're gonna be reviewing for 14 days to get us their list, and we've got to then go back and forth negotiating on who's gonna do peer review. I would suggest then the board meet on the 11th of April, if that's good, to appoint peer review, accept their documents, start the review of their documents.
Does that sound good with you, Mr. Hill or Mr. Legia?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the calendar.
Just shaking your head, yeah?
No, no. So, just so I'm, so I'm speaking to you, but just so I'm...
You can speak to whatever you want.
Mr. Kelly. Yeah, so I'm just clear. So, we have 14 days, which would be the 21st. By the 21st, we'll submit qualifications and three, three, up to... And we'll use the word up to three, because we may ultimately just say, hey, we got one or two, all right? And then, and then you would, you would be doing, would you be doing the same thing concurrently?
Yeah.
And then you'd want the board to meet and discuss?
And then we'd want to go back and forth to narrow that list to six.
Yeah, or even less than that, right? Three, the top three?
And, and then if the board meets on the 11th to appoint peer review, accept all...
Can we quiet down?
Accept all your documents that the board's requested so far. Ask for clarifications if we need that, and we can start to move this.
I mean, I think we have to, I, it's a lot. And I, I mean, but I think we've gotta be aggressive, so let's, let's commit to it, right? From our side and your side. And then that would mean you probably need, you'd need up to, no more than six, but, you know, qualified engineering firms that meet a threshold. So, the first thing we're gonna do is give you a draft of a kind of pre-qualification statement, right? We'll try to do that in seven days. Four, by 14 days, we're gonna list up to three engineering firms that we feel are qualified to be peer, peer review consultants, right?
Yeah, but we're gonna give you the same three, the same 14 days.
That's correct. That would then turn around and give you enough time to have the documents in, in advance. And that would give us enough time to, to respond to some of the questions that, that you raised today that we think we can answer, because we would wanna give that to you a couple of days in advance of your April 11th meeting. Is that right? So...
A couple of days.
Like a week?
Do you know what I do? Like, I don't look at things and go, yeah, motion to approve. Like, I need time, if I don't know what you're giving and what this, but you don't care. I mean, I, at least give us four days notice.
Yeah, well, that's where I was, I was going with, like, the 4th of April, maybe a week, in advance of your, your meeting of the 11th, right? I mean, that's pretty aggressive, but I think we can do that. Is that...
When I'm ready to make an decision?
That's right.
Don't, excuse me. Hello? So, this peer review thing, they're saying 14 days, then we got 14 days to figure things out. But we need to technically, in open session, we don't technically have to do it in a public, part of the public hearing process, do we? Can we all have a meeting?
You would do it in, in, we would continue this to a time and date certain. You would do it in the, in the hearing.
Just to appoint? Peer review?
Yep, it would stay the same.
So, it's all done during a public hearing? I was just seeing if we could just do a meeting to appoint? But if you wanna come down and whatever's gonna happen, you know?
Well, I mean, you know, understanding that the 11th would only be an appointment, you know, I mean, a hearing and an open meeting are...
Same thing, basically.
They're different by the, by, in the eyes of the law, but it's...
Okay.
You know, you're gonna be, you're gonna have the board appear, and you're gonna have two people here, and you're gonna say, this is what we came up with. Do you do, you know, do you vote? Yep, I do.
What's April 11th?
Tuesday.
Huh?
It's a Tuesday.
It's not conflicting with a board of selectmen's meeting?
Well, whatever.
Do we have anything lined up right now?
April 11th?
You okay with April 11th?
I'm okay with April 11th. April 4th does not...
I'm not working, yeah. Kevin, it doesn't work for me.
If we have to do a selectmen's meeting after, we can do it after.
Yeah. So, April 11th?
This is just for an appointment.
Five?
Five.
Mr. Legia?
If I may, just really briefly, I just heard Mr. Hinckley saying that the 11th would just be for an appointment. If we're going to do our best to answer the questions that have been posed here tonight a week in advance of that, I would just suggest we might be able to do more than just the appointment. I mean, hopefully, at that point, we actually would be able to have a little back and forth on whatever we're able to provide in terms of answers ahead of it, so just...
What, continuous conversation on the application? That's already been presented?
Yeah, exactly.
Not, because peer review's gotta go out and do the homework, and that's... They gotta go there.
So, peer review is, is going to be happening after the 11th, as I understand it. All I'm saying is, I think it is a good idea to reconvene on the 11th, continue the hearing. One item could be confirming who, yeah, pointing, confirming who the peer review consultant's gonna be. I'm just saying, I think we could actually continue the discussion on the application itself. Hopefully, we'll have answers to a number of the questions you've posed, and we can start to talk through those.
You're gonna give me that on the waivers, right?
I will certainly, maybe I will have that ready for you.
Mr. Tim, just to clarify, I wasn't stating that it was just for that. I was actually just trying to clarify for my own use.
Oh, great. I, sounds, we're all missing. Thanks.
Mr. Kevin, if I could just add to that, then maybe the other part that I think we'd be able to deliver, and, and I think the town would be able to as well, is we could get to the point where we're gonna have a peer review, but we could put some, we could put a scarecrow together around the, the quote, right? Because when we do land on a firm or two firms to get quotes from, we want a kind of a straw man of what that looks like, what their scope of work would be. Pretty simple of, hey, you're gonna review the application for completeness, accuracy, and, and you know, best available control technology, all of those sort of things. So, we could, we could have that ready as well. And that would be something that we would submit to you in that 14-day timeframe. You, and you would agree that, yeah, that looks good. And that way, when we do land on engineering firm A and B, or A, B, and C, that we're ready to go coming out of the 11th.
We could discuss this couple of weeks during that.
That's correct. Yep, finalize it. We'll give you something in advance, at least from...
We'll review it and comment.
We, we both have plenty of experience with engineering firms, so we, we know it's the right... Perfect.
Okay.
Continue this public hearing. You gotta do it.